...would be looked at very differently. This whole culture of our district is really a great district. We have many things to be proud of. We have a superintendent who is working his heart out. He took six days of vacation last year, but he was away on a weekend. You know, I know that there are those of you who don't have the same opinion I have, and you're entitled to your opinion. But I think he's doing a great job, and I want to show him some support. And I want to say, we need to take this egregious clause out of there. That's the one thing that I am most concerned about, is this egregious clause. And I really feel that it shouldn't be in this contract.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
This proposal gives me heartburn. It truly does. But you would think that somebody wouldn't fire somebody without cause. But I know that there are forces out there that want to fire. And I've had calls from board members saying, will you support me if I fire him? I'm like, we can't talk about this. You know, it's out of the sunshine. And I talked to our lawyer, and our lawyer said, well, it's only out of the sunshine if you talk back. So, and then you're violated too. So I guess, you know. But I do believe that, you know, and I asked, what is the fireable offense? What is the fireable offense? You can't fire somebody just because you don't like him or you don't get along. That doesn't work. I mean, I look, and I look back at Dr. Norris and how he got run out of town because he wanted to put technology in all the classrooms, is what it turned out to be. You know, sometimes people react to change differently and don't want to see a change. And sometimes we react to a few people that are making a lot of noise. I think that a lot of people that are saying, well, you can't keep him because he's a sexual We can't fire him over that issue because he was investigated and cleared. When we were hiring him, we were told, we cannot use that to not hire him. So, you know, maybe there was some, you know, bad, you know, bosses shouldn't go out, you know, after work and celebrate with, you know, coworkers. I mean, I know people want to have that camaraderie, but apparently you can't do it in a school district. You know, we don't want your, our bosses going to a bar with a group of their employees and talking and having fun. You can't do that because somebody might take something that's said in a different way. And it's also difficult to fire somebody that isn't working up to your expectations. You might get something filed against you. I mean, so there's all these other little things that follow, that come through, that people could be using here. But I still say, since he was hired, and I've talked to people he works with, there is no fireable offense, in my mind. We can't fire him on something he may or may not have done before we hired him. Can't do it. Law says you can't. And if we fire him for not liking him, he can turn around and sue us and get right back on this board because you have to have some reason why you're going to fire somebody. You can't just fire him for no reason. Or if you fire him for something that they've said you can't fire him for, you can't do I wouldn't think we would have to do this. I surely don't want to do this. I really don't want to do this at this time. But I think because of the nature of what people are making this, and it just goes back to 2006. It caused all kinds of angst on the school board because some teachers didn't like the technology in their classrooms. Now we've got, you know, some rumors that are being spread and allegations that are made. But it comes down to, and I still think it comes down to, there's a lot of people that just don't like Dr. Bowden because he came from career in tech education. He didn't come from K-12. I've heard that over and over again. But the bottom line is, Dr. Bowden changed things up, made some people uncomfortable. But the bottom line is, we saw that dashboard tonight. We saw how the administration is looking at and paying attention to curriculum and making sure our children succeed. That should be where we are looking at. Is he helping our children succeed? Yes. Are some of the people that work for him upset? I mean, there's, we're the largest employer in the county. There's always going to be people who don't like their boss. There are some people that handle it better than others. Some people use name-calling, and even name-calling of people who support him. You know, I can't stop that. You know, but I, you gotta think about the whole picture and what it does to the whole school climate. Don't be pointing fingers and saying it's all his fault for the climate we have right now, when you have some of that fault yourself for bringing it up and building on it yourself. Because, as he said, it does take two people to come forward and to try to work it out. And I think that there are people on this board that haven't taken that extra step. And there are people in the audience that haven't taken that extra step, too. And if you really cared, you would work. And I don't want to do this. I don't want to do this. But if that's going to move us forward, and if it's going to give a clear message to the people out there that Dr. Bowden is working with, that yes, listen to these changes he wants to make because he's going to be here. We support you in what you're trying to do here with the dashboard and in these grade inflations that you're trying to change. We support what you're doing. And so with that, as much as I want to not do this, it's brought here, it's in my hand right now, and I'm going to have to support this, not because I truly like this. But, you know, it's not the end of the world. It's not the end of the world. Yes, it is. No, it's not. You could change contracts again when you want.
Mr. Har, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Several points. The motion, as I understand it, is to extend the contract and to remove the clause for termination without cause. Those are certainly policy decisions that the board can make. The contract states that it can only be amended in writing. So I believe that the appropriate, if the board chooses to make these changes, then, I'm sorry, you're showing me something.
It means have the actual.
In the actual contract.
Well, there needs to be a written amendment. If you have one, then that could be a written amendment.
Yeah, I have one. It's a written amendment.
Pass it down. Pass it down.
All right. I mean, I would, I was going to suggest to you that the appropriate thing would be to direct me to bring you back such an amendment.
That would be typical.
But that's up to the board. I'm simply telling you what the contract says.
Can I read it to you, please?
Of course.
The amended, it said, I move that we extend the contract of the superintendent.
I moved that we extend the contract of the superintendent by two years to June 30th, 2022, and that we remove Section 14A and 14B from the contract, eliminating the board's ability to terminate the superintendent without cause.
Thank you. I think that was the motion. For clarity, for the general counsel to confirm, per the contract, it says, well, I'm sorry, not per the contract, but an amendment to a contract can be made, but it would be in a contractual form. And there are two parties to do so. So I think in the written format, it wouldn't be in the way of a motion. It would be in a legal contract.
Right. We did an amendment to the contract fairly recently, extending the June 30th date to the July 17th date. So if we wanted to make a contract amendment, I mean, certainly the typical, and I would say best way to do that would be for me to draft an amendment to the contract, doing those two things, obviously.
But we vote on it today.
Well, you can.
It'd be a legal contract to bring forward, as we've done with the amended contract, for example, when we did.
I mean, typically, that is how a contract would be amended, that there would be a legal, I mean, we do it frankly, all the time, amendments to contracts.
Okay.
And obviously, the superintendent, I assume the superintendent would agree to this amendment. He would need to agree as well, because contracts can only be amended when both parties agree. So, I mean, in a typical sense, I would think you would direct me, if the board, if that's what the board chooses to do, to bring you such an amendment, and I would do so for your next board agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
I just want, I think people are getting hung up on cause and without cause. For cause doesn't mean you have a reason. For cause has to do with you violated some law, you're convicted of a felony. If you have, we could have a situation where all five of us don't like the direction that the superintendent is going, and that we, all five of us, want to replace the superintendent because he wants to, he wants to go in one direction, and we want the school district to go another direction. If we remove this cause, clause, and all five of us wanted to remove the superintendent because, for a variety of reasons, if he hasn't been convicted of a felony, hasn't violated, hasn't done any of those things, then we wouldn't be able to get rid of him. Why would you, why would you, as a board, want to give up that flexibility to have all five, there's a scenario where all five school board members want to replace the superintendent. This is, this is not about Dr. Bowden at this point. This is about good governance and policy. Why would this, why would the board freely and willingly give up that authority? Just doesn't, is beyond compare. I mean, can you imagine the discourse we would have if we had a unanimous board that wanted to go in a different direction than the superintendent, but because of the contract, we couldn't do it? And we're going to, oh, here's the caveat, we're going to extend it even more years. Why wouldn't, if you wanted to do this, why wouldn't you keep the same number of years to see how it went? No. Now you're going to run the possibility of having the unanimous board, a majority of the board, a supermajority of the board, not wanting to go in the same direction, to go their separate ways, and you've essentially neutered the board. We could, he can totally ignore us at this point. There's nothing we could do. He could, if we tell him to do something, if he doesn't violate the law, if he's not committing a felony, if he's not violating policy, there's nothing the board can do. We can't give him direction now. We have now given that authority to give direction to the superintendent. I don't know for, why we would ever give up that authority. One of the authorities the board has is, is being able to give direction to the board through a majority process. By removing this and extending this, we are neutering the board and making the board less effective, and quite possibly causing harmony and discourse if you have a situation where unanimous board wants to go in a different direction than the superintendent. Again, this isn't about Dr. Bowden or not Dr. Bowden and the stuff that Shirley Brown was talking about. This is just good governance and how a board of directors operates. I've never seen what board of directors isn't able to remove their superintendent short of him going out and committing a felony. They're just extremely, extremely odd. And there are a lot of administrators throughout Sarasota County, I know at least, who their board has the ability to terminate their employment, and they have done that from time to time. So this is not an odd thing to have a majority of the board being able to terminate their one employee. But I don't think anybody wants to be in a situation, we would never say to Dr. Bowden, listen, Dr. Bowden, you cannot terminate any of your employees unless they commit a felony. I mean, that would seriously handstrap your ability to operate as superintendent. And that would be a bad policy. If we created a policy that says, no employee is ever allowed to be fired unless they commit a felony. I don't think that that's a good process to do. And to give people long-term contracts, too, that's just bad governance at this point. We shouldn't make this about Dr. Bowden or other people. This should be about good governance of a board.
Thank you. I know, Mrs. Zucker, you're on deck. I'm going to speak because I haven't addressed this yet. This gives me serious concern, and I'm listening to what has been said, and I think, I think Mr. Robinson was quite eloquent there, that this is not about, this is not about Dr. Bowden at this point. This is, this is stooping to a level that I do not believe this community would support, no matter who fills that seat. I mean, think of some of the most prized superintendents prior, and that kind of action, I do not believe would be supported. And so let us try not to make it about anyone. I truly put, I know that I'm not, I can guess why this is being brought forward, but ultimately, I think that this is a great district, and we need to work together and look at and respect each other's views, and reflect on what was said, and move our district forward. Just because there are some tougher evaluations, I come here every single day prepared to work together. I recognize there are elements that we don't agree, but I respect one another. I try to work together and move us forward. Cutting, doing this motion cuts the autonomy and authority of individually elected board members to a level that is unprecedented. And it is not good, again, talk about morale. Every employee should be, they're as good as each, the work that they do. It shouldn't be a forced hand that's required in extending, especially after a discussion like this, that we extend it two more years without really having an in-depth discussion about it. I think that, I'm gravely concerned that this would be brought up. Is it about one person, again, or is it about, this is what's best for the district? And I do not believe this is best for the district, and I do not believe it's best for the community. I know I gave, again, a tough evaluation. Did I make, did I move to terminate? No. I want to raise it, and that's why I started. This is a tough discussion, but I want us to reflect on each perspective and each, what each person said, and look at it, and come forward and move us, move this district forward, and find a way to work together. But to, to change the contract in that language, I think is, well, I think it speaks volumes, and it's very concerning, and I really hope that the board will reflect and take a moment before supporting this. Mrs. Zucker?
This is what's best for the district. You need stability, and not have a superintendent having a one-year contract, there's no stability. There is no one in their right mind that would come here and be our superintendent right now. No one. With the same contract that Dr. Bowden has, you have to take out that without cause, clause. That's ridiculous. We can fire him. That doesn't prevent us from firing him if he does something wrong. That has nothing to do with it. But it will stop the chatter that's out in the community right now about firing him now for no cause. That's why I want this to go, because that's what I've been called and asked to fire him. I'm not going to fire him because I don't have cause. But that clause in there gives me the option to fire him without cause. That's wrong. And I think that's a terrible way to take our district. And I'm sorry that I didn't catch it when we first signed the contract, because that was, it was just a terrible contract. And we need to give him some stability as well. He has children in the district. I mean, he doesn't want to know, think that, well, maybe next year he won't have a job because the board can just fire him. Not that he has to even do anything. That's why I think that this motion is very important, that we remove that language from the contract.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodman?
Well, I just want to reiterate, we can get rid of our superintendent if we really think he's doing a bad job, and if we choose to do so. Last month, Hernando County, one Tuesday night, dismissed their superintendent, and it happens all over the state all the time, without this clause in the contract. So that is, the hope that I have is that if we approve this clause being removed and extend the contract, that we have made a big commitment. We can still change our minds if things don't go well. But I am convinced that we have the group, we have the, we have the personnel, the staff, the teachers, to make this the best district in the state, and therefore, I'm making that commitment.
Mrs. Brown?
My question may have been answered. What happens when these other school districts that don't have this want to fire them? How are they able to do that?
There, let me try to add a little bit of clarity, at least. A termination with cause under the contract can be for a number of reasons. There are what are called, the so-called seven deadly sins, drunkenness, immorality, conviction of certain crimes. Cause can be broader than that. But there has to be, obviously, good cause that a judge or hearing officer would find. Under the contract, the board has the ability to terminate for cause. The superintendent would have every right to challenge that, should that be invoked. Without cause is, is what it says. It is simply the board making a determination at a given point in time that it wants to sever the relationship. The superintendent does not have the right, under his contract, to challenge that. Obviously, you can't terminate without cause for an illegal reason. You can't do it because of someone's race or sex, et cetera. But you can just make the decision that you don't want this person to be in that job anymore. And the quid pro quo for that, in the contract currently, is 20 weeks of severance to make that, to make that choice. Many, I know when we were formulating this contract, I and we, in a workshop, looked at other contracts from around the state, and certainly, there are a number of contracts that have without cause provisions for superintendents. I certainly don't believe that all do, but many do. So that's, it's really a policy decision on the board of what, what you believe is in the best interest of the district and in the best interest of the board, certainly without cause termination provision. And the reason that I suggested it be in there is because it increases the board's flexibility. That's, I feel like, is my role, to give you that option. You, of course, have the policy right and authority to say, we've considered that, and we believe that that's not in the best interest of the board. That's your policy role. I only give you options and tell you what I believe the ramifications of them are. So that's some distinction between cause and not cause, or with cause and without cause.
If the school grade went down, would that be with cause or without cause?
I mean, unless you specifically listed that with cause, I don't know that that in and of itself would be.
Mr. Robinson, we have a couple of people. So, I just want to make sure, were you, was that?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to give the board some more information.
I asked a question and got an answer, and now can I?
Yeah, of course.
I believe that, you know, if, if the grades plummeted, although we would know way ahead of time if that happened, I mean, we saw where they're going. But I think that, as happened in other counties, that don't have this, they can still fire their superintendent. I didn't want to be doing this or any of this. I had a call before I came here. In fact, I stopped to take that call and then left my phone in the other room and had to go, turn around and go back and get it. But I had a call from a reporter. A reporter called me and said, is it true they're going to make a motion to fire the superintendent tonight? I don't know who told the reporter that that was out there. But again, no one has shown me a fireable offense yet. Just because you don't like somebody, or you can't get along, or you got a problem working with boards, you know, as, you know. I think we, I didn't want to do this, but I, but I think in, because that I had that phone call, that, that somebody was going to be trying to do this, I didn't know this was going to be brought up today. But I think because of that phone call, and because of some of the comments that were made today, putting all the blame at the superintendent's feet, at the same time, we were hearing from our departments how wonderful we're doing and where we're moving forward. I mean, we increased on almost all of those, those measurements, and we held firm. I know, we didn't lower any of them. And we're, so to even be thinking of firing the superintendent because, you know, some people don't like him, because some people never like any of their bosses, is, or don't get along on any of their boards, it, to me, is wrong, and I don't, and if, if it shuts the door on this and makes people come to the table to sit down and work things out, I'm going to go ahead and support it.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm sorry, I did cut you off. I'm sorry, Ms. Brown. And the only person talking about firing him is you. Nobody's bought up firing.
No, I told you, I told you I got a call from a reporter that said she heard from someone on the board, they were bringing it up tonight. She didn't say who.
Well, we're actually talking, I think they got it reversed. We're actually talking the exact opposite of firing him. I mean, this is as far as the opposite.
I said, I didn't say it. I said, a reporter called me and said.
Okay, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Mr. Robinson has the floor.
I'm sorry I interrupted you, then maybe that's. So I just want to go back. If, since our, our contract doesn't list student achievement going down, it's possible that the student achievement goes down, all five board members want a different superintendent because student achievement's going down, we would not be able to, if we did, he could go to a judge, and it would just be.
Cause is not discreetly defined in the contract. You have the right to terminate for cause, and I believe there's some includeings, but not limited tos, and those would be things like incompetence and morality, et cetera. I suppose, and I don't want to.
Just call someone incompetent.
Limit the board later. I think the mere fact that the grade went down would probably not be cause. It could be evidence, potentially, of incompetence, if that's what the board wanted to show, that because you weren't doing a good job, the grades went down. But that would just be a piece of evidence rather than cause in and of itself.
And I think incompetence is a much higher hurdle than being able to fire someone without cause.
Oh, absolutely, no question.
No question.
No question. That's the difference between cause and without cause.
Again, we, everybody's been talking about Dr. Bowden. I just want to say, we could be in the position, student achievement is going down, everybody said student achievement's important, and all five board members could say, and student achievement's important, you gotta, when we make these decisions, you gotta think about the future. And yet, we would be hamstrung to do anything about it. And to say that, to sit down at the table and talk, he is, you are now sending the message, the school board is neutered. We have no authority over the superintendent, as long as he doesn't do anything illegal or is incompetent. There is absolutely no incentive to, to come to the table, communicate with us at all. So. I'm just beating a dead horse, but I mean, that's where I stand.
If I can just, a couple of things. I think it's, I reflect back to making motions on the fly, and Meatless Monday comes to mind, and having that being such a major issue, that, in retrospect, I would say, I believe every board member up here can make a motion, but we have to allow opportunity for public to speak when needed, when we have an urgency. I don't sense the urgency. I would rather this be done legally, this is a legal contract. If, it sounds like the majority of the board wants to go this direction, I think it's a very big, big step that's different, that we ought to alert and make the community aware of that change. I don't see what difference it would make to have this discussion and finalize it in a legal component, in a compliant way, if that's the will of this board, that that be drafted and brought forward, but to hear from the community and make them aware as well, because I think that the rush of this is, not only does the motion itself leave a bad taste in my mouth, it's the rush, what's the rushing with it that makes me concerned. And I feel like it undermines the whole purpose of the board, and I think it is a dangerous territory. So if the will of this board is to direct, if that's, and we can vote on it, but that it would be done in a compliant manner, in a contractual manner, via our general counsel, and brought forward, that would be, if that, if that's to move forward. Because I don't see that positions are changing. Mrs. Zucker?
I would like to vote on this, the motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Hardy?
I think before you do that, because this is something outside the agenda, you need to allow the public the opportunity to comment.
Okay. But you know, I'm not the only one that brings up things for a vote at the board meeting. You guys do, too.
Okay. Let's just take, so it's, thank you. So, fine, Mr. Hardy. I, wait, we have to get the motion done first, the three of us. Did we vote on this motion?
There's currently a motion on the floor, as I understand it.
Anset.
To extend the contract to 2022.
Yes.
And to remove the paragraph, I don't remember the number.
14A and 14B.
Without cause paragraph.
Right.
If the board, before the
If the board, before the board votes on that, as I've discussed with you previously about other things that have come up late-breaking, the public needs to have an opportunity to comment.
So we have to open the floor for comment?
Correct, because this wasn't an agenda item.
Okay.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none. For clarity before we take an action, is the action, again, from the legal counsel, that a contract needs to be in written via, would it be in a...
There needs to be a written amendment to the contract.
So that would be, so for clarity, that this is voting to direct that to take place for the next agenda item?
Well, I suppose that's up to the board. That would be, I think, the more typical way to do it. I suppose the board could direct me to do it and authorize the chair to sign it. I mean, that's up to, that's up to the board. But it needs, ultimately, it needs to be reduced to writing.
Okay.
Not in a motion, in an amended contract?
Yes, but we can do it in a motion. We can do this and vote on it tonight.
Well, yes. I mean, you can do that by directing me to bring you something in writing back to be voted on at the next board meeting. Or you could vote on this and direct me to put it in written form and authorize the chair to sign it. But it has to ultimately wind up in writing.
That's what I would do.
Which one? There were two.
Um...
I need, this is a very important clarification, Mrs....
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're directing, ask what the board wants to do if we get the three votes.
What, I...
And don't interrupt me.
I thought you were asking the board, I'm sorry.
No, no better. Bridget has to ask the board. And then, at that point, we could give it to you for insertion in the contract.
You could certainly direct me to put your verbiage in writing and either bring it back to you for a further vote, or authorize the chair to sign it once I put it in writing. I think those are the two options, one or the other. But ultimately, it has to wind up in written form. And obviously, the superintendent will need to sign it. It's a contract amendment.
Okay. So in order to do that, we need three votes, right?
To do either one of those things, you need three votes.
Okay.
You have to say, do you want option A, where he brings it back to the board, or option B?
Okay.
Or to the chair?
Do you want option A, where he brings it back, or do you want option B?
Mr. Robinson, your cue is on.
Oh, she asking me?
I'm asking the board.
Okay, yeah, okay, no. So what I would think is, typically, when we approve a contract, it has a little, your little stamp at the bottom saying that it's been reviewed by legal. I mean, I don't see any reason, I know this is being rushed very much, what...
There are side conversations taking place.
Yes, there is. And it's because I made a motion and...
And you asked me, I know, you got...
And Mr. Robinson has the floor.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't see any reason why you would not want your legal counsel to draft the contract language, the amendment to contract language. Maybe there's, maybe he doesn't draft it exactly to what you had said because of some legal precedence or something, and so he wants to make sure we have agreement. I don't, there is no reason not to, we're going to meet, what, a week from now, right? I don't see the rush. Nobody's proposing to terminate the superintendent. So I personally do not want to approve a legal contract without having the lawyer approve it first, or to review it.
Please stop tapping at the side of the table, please. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms....
Yeah, personally, my point of view is, is if we approve a legal document, we have our attorney approve it, review it first, and then bring it to us. That is the customary of the board. Our agenda items are pluck-full of contracts that are, have been gone through the legal review. And for this one that's going to, new to the board, to not go through legal first, is just, it again, is only consistent with the motion.
I would stick with option B, which would be to give this to the attorney, to have it prepared for the board, for the board chair to sign.
Okay, I have a motion, and that was seconded. Is that, are there any other comments?
I don't understand what's going on.
The maker of the motion has identified that, if she could, just for the record, restate it one more time, because there has been some back and forths.
I move that we extend the contract of the superintendent by two years to June 30th, 2022, and that we remove section 14A and 14B from the contract, eliminating the board's ability for terminating the superintendent without cause.
No, I meant the part about whether the lawyer's going to review it first.
Whether it's...
I chose option B, which means that he will take this language and put it in the contract and bring it to Bridget to sign.
Was that seconded?
Yes, it was. Jane seconded.
No, I think just for, this needs to be seconded to confirm that this was changed properly.
Somebody want to second this?
Mr. Robinson, your cue, I'm sorry. Mrs. Goodwin?
I would prefer to have it done by the legal counsel and brought back to us at the next board meeting for signature and approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
We will be minus a board member.
Pardon?
We will be minus a board member.
Oh, we will?
Okay.
I said it out here in public.
There is a motion in a second. I'm sorry, there's a motion in a second, but it wasn't to identify. This is just wonky. The clarity of whether or not to do it on, at this exact moment, which is not the practice of any other circumstance when we deal with contracts, is where we're just getting clarification. I know Mrs. Goodwin, for the record, stated that she would prefer that it would be done in the normal standard of practice when we deal with contracts, that we direct the general counsel to draft an amendment and that be brought forward to the board for adoption. That's where we are right now. Mrs. Brown?
I have a question for counsel. My son is being inducted into something very important next week, and I'm flying up for the day and won't be here for the meeting. I said I will call in, but that's the budget meeting. Is this, is that where we're going to put this?
I mean, that's up to the board, but it could be the August 7th. I mean, the next regular meeting is August 7th.
Okay.
You could, I mean, I know there are, there's at least one meeting in between for...
I wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be on, I'm going to call in on the budget.
Be August 7th.
But I mean, that's up to, that's up to the board.
Right. So that would be, but that's a good point of clarification. So it would be a regularly scheduled board meeting with, otherwise, it's, I mean, the 31st is a tentative budget hearing, so typically, it's only budget discussions. We don't have other items of the agenda. So this would be for August 7th.
That'd be good.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Zucker?
So, listening to Jane, I will go with Jane and ask our attorney, Hardy, to draw up this document.
So my understanding is, the motion would be to direct the council to provide you a written amendment to the superintendent's contract, which would extend the contract to June 30, 2022, and remove the without-cause termination provisions in paragraphs, I believe you said 14A and B?
Yes.
To present to you at the August 7th board meeting.
Okay.
Am I correctly stating it?
You're correct.
All right, so then, that is the motion?
Yes, that's...
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any additional comments? We'll take a voice vote, starting with Mrs. Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? And the chair votes no, and the motion passes 3 to 2.
I will have that for you in advance of the meeting on the 7th.
Thank you. I believe there's still outstanding items to discuss as it pertains to the superintendent's bonus. Am I correct in that?
You need to, the board needs to set the performance goals for the 2018-19 school year. As you will all recall, there is a commitment in the contract to set aside or to allocate $15,000 a year, separate and apart from salary, for performance pay. I believe this past year, the board decided to have three goals and agreed that they would each be worth $5,000. It's up to the board to decide, A, how many goals there are, and assuming there's more than one, how do you split the $15,000 up?
Mrs., I'm sorry, is this from earlier? Is this from earlier?
Yeah. I don't see that this is the time to do that. I mean, we did it in a workshop last time. Can't we do it in a workshop again, or?
Well, the contract stated that it needed to be done by June 30th.
Okay.
We've amended the contract to say it now needs to be done by today.
Okay.
So contractually, this is the day that it needs to be done.
That's correct.
Okay, well, then I'll...
And it should be done in consultation. It's the board's ultimate decision, but the contract contemplates, and I think good practice contemplates, that you would consult with the superintendent on, and get his thoughts. You obviously have some performance goals from last year. I don't know if those would be appropriate to continue, or if there are different ones, or, I mean, that's up...
I like them restated.
Yeah.
The ones from last year. Does anybody have them with them?
Yeah.
I do not.
Do you?
No.
But I can tell you what they are.
All right, tell us what they are.
Okay. For the 17-18 school year, there were three goals identified and a value of $5,000 assigned to each one. One was a 1% increase in the overall performance of the district, which means we were currently at a 63, that if we moved to a 64, that bonus criteria would be met. The second was a 1% increase in the percentage of students in the lowest quartile showing learning gains. That objective was not met. The third was a 1% increase in students in the lowest quartile in math showing learning gains, and that criteria was met.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, did you want to move forward with that as a suggestion? I know I have a couple other board members, I know this is a little different since we're at a board meeting versus a workshop, but I know there's a couple other members who wanted to speak.
You know, for lack of anything else, I'd say move forward with that again.
Okay. Unless it's a motion, I have a couple other board members who wanted to speak. Do you want to wait until...
Wait a minute.
Okay, Mrs., sorry, Mr. Robinson, I apologize.
The one man out here. And you're just assuming that's my gender.
But please don't get that started.
So I think you're going to be a victim of your own success, so my question to you is, can you do 2%? Well, you did 1%, and you went up 3. You went from 64 to 67. So it makes me think 1% was a pretty low goal. And so I'm asking you, but obviously, going from 67 to 69 is a lot harder. So I'm asking you, are you comfortable with 2% or only 1%?
I might argue that a four-point gain means that I've met that performance objective for the next three years. But maybe we improved too much. We should have gone to 64, 65, 66 before getting to 67.
I agree with that.
But I would tell you that the higher up you get, if you look at St. John's, who has a 69, they maintain, I would certainly consider that superintendent's year to be a success. And so certainly, I would say that maintenance of the 67 or a 1% increase would be good performance on behalf of the district at those levels.
Can I ask you a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
What happens if we said 15,000, same as the one, but I had a caveat? If you make us number one in the state, you get another 15,000.
I think the payment of bonuses, although is a worthy goal, is problematic.
Merit pay.
Well, I can tell you that it's problematic to pay bonuses, although I take great pride in the achievement of the district. The achievement of those scores was not my sole action. It's not like paying a commission to a salesperson. This is the performance of the district as a whole. And so if you offered to double the bonus, I would respectfully decline.
Okay. Thank you. Then I guess if, you know, 2% may be too much for the 67, so I'm fine. And it was Ms. Brown who originally came up with the compromise, so I'm willing to go with the Brown plan again.
Well, I know that I didn't know I was next until it didn't shift. And my question is, because it is problematic, and I thought maybe today, people might think that this was, you know, what is this bonus? And we know what particulars there were. You are also in a CEO executive program that you started this past year, which is a two-year program, correct? Talk to us a little bit about what is involved in the next step of that, and perhaps that could in some way fulfill for the bonus.
Okay. So I'm in a cohort of superintendents. Most of them are elected superintendents that took office in November of 16. And so I have voluntarily participated in a CEO leadership development program, which is authorized in Florida statute. It's administered jointly between FADS and the Florida Department of Education. It's a two-year program. At the conclusion of that program, a portfolio is submitted to the Department of Education, and they grade the project and the participation, and they assign a value of between $3,000 and $7,000 for elected superintendent. That goes on to their base pay upon receiving a score from DOE.
But that does not go on your base pay, so it's only those elected that receive that?
The statute pertains particularly to elected superintendent. My participation is voluntary, as is your decision to fund the pay increase based on DOE's determination. Would be voluntary on behalf of the board.
Did both speak?
Finished.
Okay. So I apologize, this heads up. What is the next step here, for, is that in addition to the goals and outlining?
Can I make a motion?
Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion that we repeat the same goal as last year, that it be a 1% increase overall, 1% for the lowest quartile in ELA, and the lowest 1% increase for the lowest quartile for math, and that it be split up a third, a third, a third, to essentially be identical to the performance pay from this year, or last year, which was July, last year.
And I second.
You have a motion in a second? Are there any additional, any comments? Seeing none, we'll take a voice, I'm sorry, are there any members of the public who would like to vote on this? Technically, it wasn't on the, vote on this, speak to this. It'll be a voice vote. Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes 5 to 0. I believe that final concludes any of the evaluation items outstanding for the contract.
I believe it does. You've done the evaluation. That turned out to be 2.72 effective. You changed the base salary for, or you changed the base salary for next year, and you have established the performance goals for the 18-19 school year. I believe that is what you needed to do.
Very good.
If I might, our chief financial officer, who is charged with the payment of the bonus under the current contract, did not want to be the determining factor of which criteria was met and which criteria was not met. And so she had requested that the board make the decision that two of those three criteria had been met.
I make a motion that the superintendent met two of the three criteria.
There's a motion in a second. And thank you, Dr. Bowden, for purposes of clarification. Are there any comments on the item before us?
I love the fact that Mitzi's a CPA.
Does, Mr. Hardy, do we need just public comment for this particular...
I think this is all part of the evaluation.
Okay, just wanted to ensure. We'll do a voice vote for this. Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes 5 to 0. I believe that concludes all of our new business items. I know we are moving to comments. I have one, but I want to offer my, an opportunity for my board members, if they have any. Anyone? Bueller? So I wanted to address this as we move forward on the budget. I know a number of us received emails from our charter schools regarding the capital sharing. And I know that the superintendent had shared information with us, and I wanted to get some clarity on that. A couple of different things that were stated in that email, and I know we addressed it at our last board meeting, or, excuse me, workshop, but that, as it relates to the Engli... Engli... English, the information that was included on it, it stated that this, the volatility was pursuant to statute, which there were changes in statute, you know, after 7069, 7055. My only question is, we in Sarasota County have had a long tradition of whether it was required by the state or not to support our charter schools through a formula with capital dollars, and my question is, why would that change this time? Why would we go to the bare minimum, you know, the baseline that's required by the state versus continuing our standard that we've done in the past?
Is that a question from me, or a question of the board?
No, that would be you.
And so, we were simply following the statute. I do want to say that, in fact, we started our day together, Ms. Bowman from SMA was over to see me, I have a number of appointments scheduled to meet with our charter school leaders to understand their concerns, but the proposal that you looked at most recently conforms to statute, and I think there was a lot of conversation, and I really enjoyed just kind of sitting there and having the conversation today regarding the payment that was made last year, whether or not those funds were available this year, but then looking specifically at the PICO allocation, the PICO allocation this year is approximately triple what it was last year, but it still does not rise to the level of our old 30% rule, and so we kind of threw some ideas around today. I'd like to cost out some of those proposals and bring you some options in that regard. I think there are some common sense solutions that we could put forward that would meet the needs of our charter schools, and I do believe we could find capacity in our capital budget to do that.
Okay. I see members of the board, was this on this particular topic? Mrs. Goodwin, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brown, I'm looking at Mrs. Brown, sorry.
He almost already answered it for me, because I understand that, you know, those capital dollars that we shared with you are those capital dollars that we're allowed to share over to operations, and I would imagine it's the same thing with the charter schools, they can then put those dollars into operations?
Yes, now, I don't want to speak for them, I just want to kind of talk of the conversation I had this morning. The 30% rule is what we transfer from our capital to operating. When you get kind of down into the weeds and talk to charter school operators, frequently, the transfer is the other way, is that operating dollars are used to meet capital needs, and so we allocate it to them based on our own practice of 30%, and what that is, is essentially an operating equivalent, is that's how much of our capital dollars we use for operating, and so that's where the 30% rule comes from. In some cases, they're transferring all of it to operating to pay for salaries, but in most cases, they're actually transferring operating dollars, which can be spent anywhere to cover capital needs.
Mrs. Brown?
You know, part of me would want to say, welcome to our world, when Tallahassee gives us something one year and then pulls it back the next. I'd like to work with you all, you know, besides helping to find some middle ground on this, work with you all, when we're looking at, and we are looking at, you know, what our legislative agenda is going to be, because I think there's definitely something, when we talk about increasing the base student allocation and not rolling back our millage rate, you know, I think if we can explain all that to you, I don't know how much you understand about the FEFP formula, I'd be happy to sit down, or this is the pro on it, but I think if we came with a unified voice to the legislature, how those two things hurt us, they might even be willing to listen to you a little more than they would listen to us, but I would like to be partners in that. But when I look at the whole chart and how some districts got a lot, I mean, I think it was up, there were some districts that got over $200, $2,000 per student, and some that only got 75, whenever the, it's not so much when the legislature sees it, but it's when those schools see it, they take it back to the legislature and say, that's not fair, and the legislators will look at it and say, oh, yeah, that's not fair, so we'll try to make it fair. So, when they make it fair, those people who were getting more, then they don't get it back, and we had that happen to us in 1990, when they froze the discretionary millage. But I would like to have you work with us when we talk about the legislative agenda, and if we can all look at understanding that we need to work together on that base student allocation, and asking the legislature not to roll back our tax rates so that we can have that, wasn't it over $100 million of the last three years that cost us? I mean, so, we're feeling your pain too, but I think in this instance, the pain's a little more stronger on you all this year than it was, because, you know, when we didn't get any additional, you know, operating dollars either, I can see how that would hurt you, and that was surely not expected, so hopefully, we can come to some agreement on where we can reach out to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I too am concerned about this, and I've had several conversations with some of you about this whole issue. There was, you know, some schools that last year that got $75 per student, and you got over $1,300 per student, and others that, like Big Miami Day, that got 400 or 500, where some got almost, as we said, almost 2,000. So, it spiked up, and that was the cause for the concern, so that's why it's been changed, and I say stay tuned, because it'll probably be changed again this year, and we do need to look at this issue and work together, and make sure that we're vigilant during the legislative session, which we all know will be later next year than, with new leadership, which could be, and could work out well for us. I know that you have a lot of concern because you're looking at safety and security, some of you are in guardian training and doing other things, so please let us see what we can do to align and to help you out.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson was on this topic, so I just had a follow-up question. Okay, Mr. Robinson?
Again, you can call me Eric. The issue that I'd like to see, Mitzi, I know she's Mr. Robinson, is I'd like to see, because we're not talking about, everybody's talking about funding for next, actually, this fiscal year, it seems weird that we approve, start July 1st, approve in September, so I'm sorry if I change with the years. For this fiscal year, when they're comparing last fiscal year, I think in order to get a good picture, you need to see what it was the year before, call it year one, last year year two, and this year year three, for purpose of discussion. I think it's important to see the total average amount for those three years, if you're going to bring a calculation forward, so you can see if there was an overage last year, and then what they get this year, how does that average over the three years, are they better off, worse off, or the same, and what's the delta? To simply look at this discrete year number three in isolation without recognizing what happened last year is not a good way to look at the numbers. Am I explaining this correctly? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I think that's, Mitzi and I have talked about this, and I think she has done that calculation, and so when it gets brought forward, I would hope that we could see that calculation that Mitzi has already done, and she's awesome at her job, so.
And so, if you look at that rolling three-year average, and you go back to the 1617 year, the rolling three-year average is slightly higher than what they received in 1617, but the issue, as it was explained to me, is because of that volatility, that funds allocated last year are not available to meet, it's a pretty substantial delta this year, and we can certainly illustrate that for you.
But I just think that it's an important part in the decision-making process, to see all three years, and see how that's cumulative over it before we commit, personally, that's what I would like to see.
I'll make sure that's included in the...
Thank you.
Thank you, and then my just question was timing, because we are approaching, what would that look like, just for us, because our next workshop isn't until mid-August?
So, you will be asked at the budget meeting to advertise the budget. It is conceivable that we could have a budget amendment available to you, but it would not be required, you could amend that budget after advertisement, so there's nothing that would have to be in place to advertise the budget. I would think by the end of the week, middle of week, next week, I could have some scenarios available to you that you could decide from.
Okay.
But it would not hamper the budget timeline.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
But I do want to say, just, since there's not a public comment, is, as Mr. Robinson has articulated, we are in July, I don't think, just on behalf of our charter school partners, that we can delay too long because they're trying to develop budgets, and we're talking about a couple million dollars flowing, is they're making budget and staffing decisions, and I know they're leaving positions vacant until they understand the full implications of it, so I'll have information to you, maybe we could have it as a discussion point, but not a decision point, where at least we could signal to the charter school operators, or even take action at the budget meeting if you so chose.
Very good, thank you. Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, announcements and communication, tentative budget meeting is July 24th at 2018, 2018 at 3 o'clock. Public hearing to adopt tentative millage in budget is on July 31st, 2018 at 5:15. Next policy review workshop session is August 7th at 2018, 4 o'clock, and next monthly work, board meeting is August 7th, 2018 at 6:30. If there are no additional comments, we are adjourned.